Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular City of White Lakes Council meeting Monday, August 24th, 2020 at 6:30. Roll call, please.
Mayor Freeland?
Here.
Councillor Zins?
Here.
Segler?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Becky made a couple changes to the agenda, so I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion by Councillor Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Segler. A roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yeah.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes, thank you. Becky, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Item four is approval of city council minutes July 27th, August 5th, and August 10th. Item eight is a filing of correspondence that's listed on your agenda and was included in your meeting packet. And item 11 is approval of claims, payroll, and receipts.
Any, everybody okay with the, with the consent agenda? If so, could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Pop? There's support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes, sorry I had to stop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes, I see we have nobody on tonight for, uh, guess, citizens forum, so we'll go to reports from staff. Wade, Wes?
Um, golf course has been actually pretty busy still. Um, usually it'll slow down here come right after Labor Day, so other than that, um, not much else going on. All done with tournaments for the year, so not much else to report.
Okay, pretty good, pretty good golf here, though?
I think so, yeah. We actually, I, I think we were, we'll come out ahead of last year.
Okay.
Lot of new faces, too.
Good, good to hear. Library Director, Sue Sellers.
We have a movie come, drive-in movie coming up this Friday at 8:30. Um, it'll be at the arena parking lot, and the movie is, um, The One and Only Ivan. It's a PG movie, so it's great for all ages. Um, we'll be work, we're working on a couple of adult take-and-make craft projects. One is through Legacy Funding. And we'll, uh, Legacy Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and all, um, live performances have been canceled through the end of the year. But there are several legacy performers who have agreed to do some virtual presentations, which we'll have access to for two weeks at a time. And then next spring or summer, if it, if things have changed, they will also do a live performance at all the libraries. Um, so we're hoping that can happen. And we are planning, trying to plan more, um, in-person or, or like take-and-make projects where people aren't on the screen so much, trying to do some kind of programming, working out some details. Um, getting the community engaged without having to be on the computer. Uh, we're working on developing another mailing, mass mailing, using the Every Door Delivery Service to update the community on what types of services we now have available. Um, and I'm a part of a committee that we just started meeting with the state of Minnesota, working with the state library and the Minnesota Department of Education to, um, collaborate with public libraries in the schools to see what we can do to help them.
Well, Sue, quick question for you. Is, did you get the bugs worked on the sign yet?
No, um, God, Mike was, Mike was supposed to be coming this afternoon. Um, apparently Kenny and Mike feel the issue is the interior of the sign is heating up too much when it's hot outside. There's been no venting in it, um, so the heat just builds up in there, so that's why mid-afternoon into the early evening, it goes up, a portion of it goes out. So Masabi Sign came and they did put a vent in the back of it. It didn't seem to be enough. So I believe today he was coming to check on maybe adding a couple more vents on the sides and then to see what happens with that. But that's what Kenny, apparently Kenny and Mike thought has been wrong all along, that the sign's been heating up. And I did discover through the, um, the sign app, I can check the temperature of the interior of the sign, so I've been kind of keeping my eye on that throughout the day. When it went out, it was about 152 degrees inside, um, so that's quite warm. So I, they're probably correct on, on why we're having some malfunctions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick note there, Chris, that Masabi Sign was working on fine when I came in from the campground for the meeting, so they are, they are there now, or I don't know if he was just finishing up, but we're working on it.
All right, thank you, Dan. Um, Public Utility Supervisor, Jake.
All right, water plant's been doing well. Um, wastewater plant's been doing good. Construction is ramping up down there. They started pouring the concrete base for the new mercury filter building. So that's been going well. Uh, road construction, uh, had one hiccup. We had, uh, unwind out in Suffolk, a good chunk of someone's sanitary sewer line collapsed. Um, rather than dig up the road af, after it gets paved and all that, we had the sewer line replaced all the way to one foot past the sidewalk. And, uh, sewers running fine now, but we had two companies try and get through. It wasn't roots, it was this line collapsing. And that's about all I got.
Okay, thank you, Jake.
Yep.
Um, Fire Chief Tony Suler? Excuse me. Fire Chief Tony House.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot at this time, just training as usual.
Okay, Melanie?
I don't have much either. We had 106 ambulance calls for July. That's the most we've ever had, so things are picking up.
Okay. Uh, Becky?
I guess all I would report is September, um, city council, we go back to our two meetings a month. Second and fourth Mondays at 6:30 PM, still via Zoom until, um, we're able to open the building, which is uncertain at this time due to construction and the timing there, but, um, so second, fourth Mondays.
Okay.
After tonight. Thank you.
Yep. Attorney Bruntfeld?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, um, a couple of things. First of all, on the Bowles School, we are ready to go with, uh, completing that transaction. It's really just a matter of kind of getting, of getting a deed executed and, um, and then one other thing we probably have to do is, is, uh, since it really is basically, they're just kind of giving the land over to the, to the city, we probably will have to do a resolution accepting donation, uh, because they're basically donating, um, you know, an asset to the city or, you know, uh, an item of value to the city, so, uh, we probably technically should do a resolution, uh, just the city council resolution accepting a donation. So we'll get that on for the next agenda, but otherwise we're ready to go, uh, pretty much with having them execute the deed. So I can circle back with Becky and just on the logistics of getting that done with the, uh, with the owners. Um, other than that, um, on the East Masabi Sanitation, the letter of consent for, uh, transferring the contract, I've reviewed that perfectly fine, no problem at all with that consent document, so that's ready to go. But other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you.
Mitch, I've got a quick question on the Bowles School. Um, is part of the agreement that they're going to be up to date on their taxes?
Yeah, well, I mean, the reality is, is that, uh, they would have to, there has to, taxes have to be paid up to date for them to, for, to be able to record a deed, so uh, we're gonna have to, yeah, I mean, um, you know, they, in order to basically convey title to us and us to be able to have a recordable deed, uh, the taxes would have to be up to date.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, because basically if, if, if the taxes aren't up to date, we, you know, we can't record the deed that they hand us, so, um, well, so that's something obviously that's gotta be finalized with them as we go ahead and get this completed.
All right, thank you. Uh, did I miss anybody? With the screen up here, I'm not sure if I see everybody or not, so, okay. Let's move down to reports from city council. Councillor Zins?
Uh, nothing at this time, a few things later in the meeting.
Councillor Segler?
All same as Dave.
Councillor Pop?
I just have agenda items as well.
Councillor Peterson?
Um, I just have that, um, I met with the Midway Committee on Friday to, it wasn't on the agenda and I thought it was supposed to be, but, um, anyway, they wanted to get moving with that grant that we have for this year, since we have to use up the money by the end of the year. And so they wanted to start with like phase one of doing the, uh, laying the concrete, the dirt work, and then maybe remove all of the trees between the, uh, park, beach parking lot and the bike trail. And they, they did show me like where they're looking to place the shelter, and so whenever, uh, they get the council approval, they can go out and actually market exactly like where they're looking that they want to do the concrete. But, um, so if we were gonna do that, then we should probably start on it, since we only got a couple of months left before it gets cold, and then we also need to file an application if we're gonna get a grant, another grant for next year. I believe it has to be in September sometime is the deadline.
Okay, any, any comments by council on that?
I just have a couple of questions. Um, Becky, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that, will that grant that we have right now, will that cover concrete work? Or does that have to be a full, full build on our part? Can we do it in phases? Have you reached out to the IRRB?
I did reach out to IRRB, um, and they got back to me that we'd have to provide, um, the information as far as phasing, and she would have to see if we could change the scope that, from what it is now. Um, I was just waiting on what to tell, uh, tell IRRB or what to send them, and I didn't add it tonight because I, I put it on the agenda for the budget meeting tomorrow. I thought that would be a good time to discuss it tomorrow at a little more length, but, um, I don't know if they'll approve phasing it or not yet. They haven't responded to that yet.
Uh, Councillor Segler, Brian, um, when Kenny gets back from vacation, he's gonna get two quotes for concrete work and dirt work. And, uh, so we can find out what, what number we're looking at, so the council can make a decision, and then by then hopefully we'll find out from IRRB if, if we can do, uh, that part of the project this year.
I was just curious, I just, uh, don't wanna start doing something and then IRRR says, uh, we didn't fulfill our portion of the grant, you know, our, but, uh, so it sounds like we'll wait till the first meeting in September to finalize anything with this?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
But, but I think, Chris, I think the, the committee can, should go market where they're gonna put it, so everybody has a chance to look at it, so the council can, can approve where we're gonna put it.
Okay, I'll have them go spray paint it so you can see.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Chris?
No, that was it.
All right, thank you. And I, everything I have is on the agenda, and there's plenty on there tonight, so, um, we're gonna move to Old Business 9A Water Treatment Plant, replace double mandors, uh, Jake?
Uh, all I got from, uh, from George was a not to exceed $5,000 for that. He never came through with the other quote on the double doors, so we'll get the, yeah, just installation, purchase of the door and everything, not to exceed $5,000. These doors take six weeks to get after they're ordered, but.
So is, is your recommendation, recommendation to move forward?
I would like to move forward, but.
Is there, is this a, is this a budgeted item or not, Becky?
Jake, I, I don't believe you budgeted, you had enough money in like in your materials budget, or?
Yeah, I had, uh, $50,000 untouched in my, uh, other equipment fund. I'm just trying to wrap up things that I have money for before the end of the year.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve this bid?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councillor Segler, is there support?
Which bid is this?
This is the Pappas Machine Shop bid.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he, he didn't have labor last time, so he added, the, the quote is $3,006.85, and with labor not to exceed 5,000 with, uh, both, so.
Okay.
Was there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Councillor Zins. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes. Item B, approve Fisherman's Point seasonal site application. Everybody get a chance to look at that, Dan?
Yeah, uh, just a couple notes there. Uh, we did come up with increasing the site for the seasonal lake sites to $2,500.
Okay.
And kept the non-lakeshore sites at 2,000. Uh, we did come up with a finalized list of, of which sites to make. We used the analysis on campsite usage and also some practicality issues of some of the sites that are harder to get in and out of, uh, would definitely be more adapted to having a seasonal camper in there to only have to get in once, so Alan and I agreed on, on the sites. Uh, anybody got any questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, I guess I was just wondering about raising the lake sites to 2,500, just something to consider that the prices this year were, were under 2,000, and so now we're hiking them up to 2,500. It just seems like a lot since we don't actually have like water and sewer hookups.
And then, Chris, the prices were 2,300 this year, and the reason for less was because, um, the second group of seasonals got in later in the year. Is that correct, Dan?
Yeah, correct. We just paraded the, the seasonals to, we divided out how many camping nights there would be in a full season with a, a daily rate, and then multiplied that by the number of days that were left when the seasonals were, when those sites opened up, so that's how we came up with this year's total, so. The big thing to, to think about there is even a lot of the, the lakeshore sites that we do have a seasonal, we probably would make more money on those sites by renting them out on a daily or weekly basis. We decided to up the, the lakeshore sites a couple hundred bucks. Uh, we contacted a number, a number of the surrounding campgrounds, and unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of the other campgrounds are able to offer at least water. I know we cannot offer water or sewer, but, uh, we still are pretty much right in the ballpark on, on a lake site, so. And we're hoping if people, you know, if the $2,500 is, is too steep for the lake site, then they still have the, the other option of $2,000 for the, the non-lakeshore, and if some of the lakeshore sites that we offer don't, don't go, then we'll be able to rent them out and, and probably come out a little bit better in the long run, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, I have another one about some of the sites that are being switched. Um, I noticed, so, so like, we're kind of taking away some of the really nice sites that were offered as seasonals. And like four, and I think six were seasonals last year, and like 17 and 19, those are just really nice sites that people liked as seasonals, and so I know a lot of them are still being, we have some that are still on the mains, on the main stretch, but it looks like a lot of it are geared toward the loops, which I do understand we're trying to keep people kind of hidden more off the main drag, but I don't know, I just kind of wish we reconsidered some of those sites.
Again, the biggest, the biggest thing that was taken into consideration there was, was especially with the loops is to try to minimize traffic needing to go through there and campers trying to get in with, you know, with limited space. So that, that's, and then that's, that's why we kind of backed it up to starting at number 25. Most of those sites have a little bit longer driveway entrance point into them. We, we have a lot of clutter out there right now with some of the seasonal sites where they're at, and and some of these that you're talking about are just gonna add to the clutter out on the road, so. And then, of course, the other thing that was taken into consideration was that analysis of how much they are getting used and would we be better to, to rent them out on a, on a weekly basis than to offer them as seasonal, so I think, uh, I wasn't on the council, I asked a lot of questions as to who was involved and to, once we went to seasonals, how it was determined, which sites were gonna be designated as seasonal, and there really wasn't a lot of rhyme or reason to it. I think the, the campground managers at that point came up with a list of recommended sites, and then it's kind of evolved from there, so. I mean, we're, we're open to discussion. If, if we do have some time here, if, if we feel that something needs to be changed, uh, you know, we've got the drawing is held for this scheduled for the end of September, so it, uh, it's not like we have to approve this tonight if we need to think about it, or.
Any, any other discussion? Um, I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve or, or a motion to table.
I would like to make a motion to approve this list tonight. We do have one, one other issue that could become a point of contention. So when Al and I sat down to come up with this list, we were both in agreement that campsite three, which is the campsite that the managers are giving to the, uh, assistant, the campground assistant. And when Al and I had finalized this list, we were both in agreement that that site number three would no longer be offered as the site for the campground assistant. Now, today I had a long conversation with Patty and things have changed, and they want to continue with that being offered as the site for the assistant. Uh, couple of things that I would like input maybe from the councillors that were on board when this agreement was signed. So the campground manager's agreement states that the city agrees to provide one seasonal campsite at no charge for a campground assistant to work under the management, manager direction. It doesn't specifically say site three, it doesn't say lakeside, it doesn't say non-lakeside. Uh, I was told today that the council directed them that they wanted the assistant to be down there. I don't know if any of you re, recall that, or if you were involved in that discussion, that's beyond me, so.
I do remember vaguely that we have them down on that end, just for the, so someone is on that end of the campground, just they're not so far from the, you know what I mean? You got the office, and if someone's on the other end, they could go to the assistant at that, at that site down the lake there. I remember, I think that's what we were kind of thinking when we did that. Chris, am I right?
I don't remember, Brian.
I think it was, that's the way it was, but I thought it was the campground manager's recommendation at that time to have it one down on that end, so that they could keep an eye on things on that end of the point in the campground. So I think that was the reasoning back then, was that there'd be one by the office and then one by on the other end of the campground.
Does that help you, Dan?
I, I don't know if you can hear me.
Oh, hi Patty, yep.
Okay, well, for some reason we can't hear very good. We have to keep the phone right up to our ears, um, because the, I don't know what's up with the volume, if I did something wrong when I clocked in, but but what, what happened was, we, we, we were going to have Frenchie come into like 36 to be, or 37 to be closer. to be, or thirty-seven to be closer to the office. And the city decided it would be better for him to be down at one end to keep an eye on that end. And we would be down here on this end, so we agreed to not let him take thirty-seven to, and the city put him in three, he had been in four, but the city decided three would be his campsite.
And Patty, do you have any issue with him wherever he's at?
I would really like him to stay in three, that, that is, Al and I have discussed it and, and it's nice having him down there. Um, keeping an eye on things and coming and letting us know if something happens down there. Um, just turning off lights in the shelters, he does that when they get left on. Uh, it's, it's nice, nice for, for, to have someone down on that end.
Okay, Dan, you're, you good with that, Dan?
Yeah, like I said, I, I, I had a lot of citizen complaints, questions asking me why we had someone from a non-Hoyt Lakes resident was working as a campground assistant and why he got prime site picked, so. I felt it a duty to follow up and ask questions and when I had discussed it with Al, we kind of came to an agreement that, yeah, it would make more sense that, uh. And it was, there's some other circumstances that I won't go into that, that were involved there too, so. So, at that time, Al was good with not having him, he wasn't even sure that Frenchie was coming back and now everything's kosher and and they want to keep him, so.
Okay.
Kind of long and short of it, and I, I felt an obligation to the residents that got a hold of me that were concerned about why, why we weren't offering this site as you know, to a Hoyt Lakes resident and, and then did some digging to find that it was in the contract with Patty and Al, that they got one seasonal site, it, it doesn't specifically say that they, they need to hire a Hoyt Lakes resident, it's just to hire an assistant to to work under them, so. So right now, we're, we're going the way the contract is read, I guess if, if we go ahead and change, you know, when the contract is updated, it might be something we want to talk about and we may want to designate a certain site out there to be the site that the campground assistant gets and that's kind of consistent with most of the other campgrounds in the area, they have a specific site that the campground host or campground assistant gets to use free of charge, so. So I'm fine with, uh, whatever the council decides on that, so.
Okay, so did you have, did you make a motion, Dan, on approving this?
I would like to make a motion to approve this list and so number three would I don't know, being that the contract says that it has, he gets a seasonal site. We, we don't have three listed as a seasonal site, it's not available, but it's, maybe it needs to be changed, not available campground.
Yeah, that's fine, I do have that. Yeah, just make that change.
Yeah, that's all that needs to be, need, and the people need to know that that, that that's the way it'll be, so.
All right, there's a motion, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Segler, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes, motion passes. Uh, moving on to item C, Misabi's youth hockey request for early ice four-on-four hockey league, Brian?
Yeah, so, um, I believe the COVID team came back and they said they were fine with youth hockey's plan for four-on-four, so Tony, you still on? Are you guys still planning to do this?
Yes.
Okay, you, I, so I guess we're going to need a motion to allow them to use the facility, I'm, I'm okay with it, so I'll make the motion.
A motion by Brian Segler to allow, what was the start date on that, guys?
I believe the thirteenth, Tony?
Yeah, September thirteenth.
September thirteenth.
And that's twenty-five hundred bucks a week is what we're, what we charged them last year per Wade, um, Wade, are we good with that start date?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, barring no problems, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Can I have support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Peterson, any other discussion?
I got one question, uh, are we going to be able to, um, open this up and still be under the restrictions that were levied by the governor?
The fifty percent, we won't even be close.
Okay. I guess that's my only question, I just don't want to follow back on the city that we're not following through.
I guess, yeah, I did have one question also and I probably won't be able to be answered, maybe it would be, but so in the event, I'm sure that there hasn't been any decision made on, on winter sports, so what if we don't have a the high school league doesn't have winter hockey this year, I mean, it's, obviously, we're going to be compensated to put the ice on period of time and, and then it would just be taken back off?
Well, I think, well, I think regardless of what the high schools do, I would imagine, I, everything I've read and saw Minnesota hockey will still have youth hockey for the kids. There may not be high school hockey, but there still, most likely will be youth hockey. It may be following under the umbrella that we're under now where you get dressed outside and all that kind of stuff, but as far as I understand, they still plan on going forward with the youth hockey season.
Yes, at the district meeting, they had said that everything is, as of now is, it's on.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we've got a motion and support, could we roll call, please?
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes, motion carries.
One other thing I got for Tony quick, um, I don't know if you're on the board or not, or one of the voting members, but we've got a the concession stand, we're not sure exactly where that stands and I guess we'll have to jump that bridge or cross that bridge when we get to it, um, I know youth hockey wants to do the concession stand, but we don't know what the regulations against it are as of now, so we'll wait and see, so if anyone's got questions on the concession, we're just kind of waiting for some guidance from the state.
Yeah, and as of, like all the tournaments that Logan's played in that we've been to this summer, this weekend was the first time Eden Prairie had their concession stands open last weekend, but all the other ones have been closed, so. I guess that's for Angie to figure out.
Yep.
Okay. All right, moving on, uh, item D, Personnel Committee Assistant Ambulance Director Training Officer, Counselor Zins.
Yeah, uh, the Personnel Committee and, uh, Tony and Melanie, myself and the mayor met, uh, and we interviewed Cody Hanson for the Assistant Ambulance Director position. And, uh, it's, uh, a recommendation to the council that we hire Cody as Assistant Ambulance Director with a start date of September first. And then he would also be under a probationary period.
And that would be at ninety percent, Dave?
Yes.
Any questions?
And I guess. I'd like to make that as a motion.
Motion by Counselor Zins, um, support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Peterson, I have one question, then, um, does that mean, um, Jen Hall would be done as the temporary assistant on September first?
Yeah, I believe so, because when she was hired, she was hired as interim.
Okay, so that's part of your motion then?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
I do have a question with, uh, with Cody's qualifications and his teaching qualifications, I, I have a bit of a problem with the ninety percent starting wage, it's, it's almost going to be close to being a cut in pay from what he's getting right now with, uh, I think it's gonna, I mean, it's, it's not going to be a huge amount of money, so.
What are you recommending, Counselor Pop?
Well, if we could even go night, say at ninety-five percent of, of the full wage to start out with, I don't know if Mel is still on or like her input also.
I, I'm still on.
What are your, what are your thoughts on that, Mel, are you?
Well, when, when I was just a paramedic with the department, I made twenty-one dollars an hour. When I was hired as the assistant, I made sixty cents more an hour, I thought it was absolutely ridiculous, so. There, there you have my viewpoint.
Okay, and that's why I brought it up, it's, I think it's, it's not much of an incentive in which Cody is, he does a great job, he's dedicated I mean, he's proven with his skills, I think that, uh, that we can make an adjustment and I don't, do you have a recommendation there, Mel, as to, to what?
Dan, can I speak for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Um, you know, we're talking a wage per hour, but there's also in uh, incentives that, other incentives that go along with this. He's getting, uh, health insurance, he's getting vacation, uh, he's getting PTO days. So there's more than just the hourly wage that goes with this job description. Even at ninety percent, I mean, you start, you start figuring in the accruals of, uh, days off and insurance and you start adding all that up, it's, it, it's much more than sixty cents an hour. And this is just as starting at ninety percent, it's not, he's not going to be there forever.
What, when does he make his first bump? Is it one year or six months, Becky, do you remember?
Well, one year, but the council has the discretion too, as Dan is speaking, to slot him in. The only thing is, you might want to consider him getting through the probationary period. And the council could maybe look at it at the six month probation too. But I agree with Counselors Zins, there are benefits, uh, full-time, uh, when you add in the complete package, it's a pretty good deal.
So instead of waiting the full year, Dan, uh, I think we'll take a look at it at that six month mark when he gets through probation, how's that sound?
Yeah, that, that sounds great, and I realize that there are other incentives and, and I know that the way Cody had talked, it didn't sound like he was going to be taking the health insurance, which is one of the biggest incentives, but he wasn't going to be utilizing that at the present time, but that could change, so. But yeah, that's all good things to think about, so.
That's great, thank you.
With, uh, looking at it after he's got his probation in, if we need to make an adjustment there.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes, motion carries. Moving to item E, approval, the twenty-twenty Special Archery Deer Hunter List from the drawing held on Friday, August twenty-first. Uh, it should be, everybody's in your packet there. Um, the twenty-five are on the front page, one of the last one declined. So there's one, uh, Roy Olson, uh, got that spot and there's some alternates on there, so. I think we just need a motion to approve this, this is your six for us, so.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Segler, is there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Counselor Zins, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes. Moving on to F, Leeds Road Lots, um, Tammy and I did some investigating in this, I've gotten three calls in the last two weeks. Um, if you remember the Leeds lots, we sold those twenty-one lots, well, there's lots behind them, some of the people want to buy, the problem we have is they're not plotted. It's one big plot, so we would have to bring in, uh, I think it's Northern Lights, Becky, does that sound right? The one that usually comes in surveys?
It does sound right.
Yeah, so what I, what I'm recommending to the council, what I'm recommending to the council tonight is that we get a quota or two. So it can come back to the council, so we know what it's going to cost to get those lots planted. Does that sound fair?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, I will, uh, I'll, I'll work with staff to get, to get a quota, I, I think there's two surveyors in the area, but I know that's the one we work with, so. We'll, we'll put that on a, up, upcoming council agenda. Item G, approve Misabi Batuminus application for payment three in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand eight ninety-eight thirty-seven. Is Emily?
Yep, it's still here. Um, before we talk about the pay app, um, I'm sorry, I apologize, I just noticed this, but we should probably discuss the change order items first because they are included on that pay app.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep, that makes a lot of sense, so i- item H is, is Street Infrastructure Change Order Number One, Wind Dot Road Storm Sewer Arlington for twenty-eight thousand five twelve seventy.
Yeah, so, um, just a little bit of background on, on this one, um, you'll remember back in May, we brought you change order one, which was that was what we estimated the amount of the change order to be to replace the sanitary sewer line, which is under the storm line on Arlington, um, the estimated amount of that was forty-one thousand seventy-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, so that was, that was brought to you in May so that you could approve the, the scope change of the work with the estimate in mind. Now that the work is done, we've pre- prepared an actual change order. And my computer's not going to cooperate with me now, I apologize. Um, there it is, okay, we approved, we, we brought an actual change order to you for the amount um, of the work that was done based on the actual quantities in construction, which came in quite a bit less than what you had approved in May, that is at twenty-eight thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and seventy cents.
So, if, if, if there's no other discussion from the council, any questions for Emily on this? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Just a quick question, where are we sitting on the contingency overrun on this project? How much of that have we used?
Um, let me pull up the pay app here. So as of right now, um, you'll see on I'm sorry, my computer is not scrolling as fast as I wanted to, you'll see on the pay application, um, the original contract amount was one point work with me, one point nine million roughly, that's on the last page of, of Pay App Three. And, um, you can see the breakdown on there of the, the amount of the, the contract amount that has been, um, that has been done so far is at one point two, and you can also see the change order amounts on there. Um, the gross amount due on this pay app is at one point three million as of, as of right now. Um. I, I will have to open up the original estimates to see where the contingency was at.
Well, I guess the, the, the main issue I have here is this work's been done and it did come in under our, what we first approved on, so I do want to uh, a motion to approve this change order, be number two? Or change order number one?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, motion by Counselor Zins to approve change order number one for twenty-eight thousand five twelve seventy, is there support?
I'll support it.
Support by Counselor Peterson, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes. And then Emily, there was one more on here, I think it's under, um, new business.
It's not under new business ten each, I, I was gone last week and it got slipped in under new business.
Yep, that's fine, ten each. Emily?
Yeah, so this is, this is part of that ongoing change order work that we've been talking about, um, to adjust the storm sewer. The, the items that you see on here are adjustment prices that the contractor provided to us for the changes in depth. You can see that some of them. You can see that some of them were adjusted um for a positive dollar amount. Those were the deeper structures overall. There is one that is adjusted to the negative because that, those type of structures were actually shallower overall. So um so this is adjustment change order, um except for item one twenty seven, which was some rock excavation. There was some additional rock found on the project that we had not anticipated. Um if you remember, we did have that item show up on one other change order as well because we did not anticipate any any bolder excavation after looking at the soil borings.
We have rock in White Lakes?
I think we found the only ones.
There's plenty of rock in this town. Um okay, any questions on this change order? If not, I'll I'll look for a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councillor Segler, support?
I'll support that.
Support by Councillor Pop. Uh roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor of Relent?
Yes, motion carries. Um so now we'll go to item G, approve Masabi Batuminus application for payment number three in the amount of four hundred and thirty five thousand eight ninety eight thirty seven. Emily, any highlights?
Um, well, I I do have one comment on this. Um Councillor Pop had called me uh last week with some questions on the topsoil item and and some concerns with that. I did follow up on that and so I wanted to share that with you, um because I didn't have a chance to call you back this afternoon, Dan. So um I I did check with our our field crew. They said the topsoil um is in i- it's the same material as we have seen from Ma- Masabi Batuminus on previous projects. The the problem that we tend to have with topsoil up here is that it is really expensive to get a really good quality topsoil. Um the only time we end up running into it is if we end up doing work in wetlands, which is kind of a frowned upon. So um so so the topsoil borrow, i- it tends to be more expensive. Um and if you, especially if you're going to go by, you know, MinDOT standard topsoil, which is the really good stuff, that would probably run you about seventy bucks a cubic yard. Um the topsoil that they bid, the bid price is at thirty five bucks a cubic yard. Um and it i- it is the topsoil we've seen used on other projects from Masabi Batuminus. We've had some success, quite a bit of success with it, working with sod in the past. And um I did, I talked to um Eric Kendrickson, who is, who was at the construction meeting last week, and he said that they did specifically go out and look at that sod on Andover. And he said that it seems to be taking really well. So we're just going to keep an eye on it for now, if that is all right with you.
Okay, yeah. And like I said, Emily, the main reason I brought it up, I I had a citizen, citizen concern about it. And I know I had talked to Kenny about it and questioned the amount of rock that was noticeable before it was covered with sod. It didn't, you know, I think of topsoil, I grew up in farming country, good, rich, fertile, black dirt, and I've, I've seen so many different con- street construction projects where the sod gets laid down and stays nice and green. And then the next summer, when the heat comes, the weeds take over because there's really no place for the roots of the sod to take a hold of. And we end up with a a bunch of, a bunch of weeds. So I wanted to follow up both with you and and knowing that way I can get back with with the uh the homeowner that was concerned about the topsoil that was used under there. So and unfortunately, Andover with no sidewalks, there's a a larger area that's basically front yards of of people that uh that may end up with grass that looks beautiful right now and maybe not so next summer, but so.
We have a one year warranty on this, correct, Emily?
Yes, yes, correct, we do.
So something, Dan, we can look at in the spring to see what it looks like.
Yeah, right. And it's probably not going to show up until next July, August, when, you know, the heat and drought hits and and it gets really dry. But uh but thank you very much for following up on that, Emily.
Right. And I guess that's probably a good reminder to um pe- they they do maintain the sod and water it for thirty days. After that, it becomes the homeowner's uh responsibility if if they would like to continue watering it. Um I I a recommendation would be keep watering it. It, you know, it it'll, it'll uh it'll end up looking good if if they keep water on it when it's dry out. But we are heading into fall, so it's not going to be quite as big of a concern as in the summer months.
Could you, does the council think maybe we should put a little reminder in there for people to help the city out and water their sod, the new sod in their yards?
I don't think it's, it's definitely not going to hurt for, you know, be being there, seeing the water truck come now for thirty, I think thirty days, is it, Emily? They'll come and and water the first
Right.
range landscape that's been watering it.
Good.
I just want to add, we did add, or we did hand out notices to each one of the homeowners on Andover, describing not cutting the grass, making sure to water it too.
Oh, you did, perfect. Thank you, Jake.
Yep.
Okay. Um can I get a motion to approve this uh this application for payment number three?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Pop, is there support?
All support.
Support by Councillor Segler, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor of Relent?
Yes. Moving on to new business, Essentia requests for drive up flu shot clinic at the EMS building in September. Councillor Zins and uh and uh Melanie?
Still on, Mel?
Yeah, I was approached from Amanda Baker with Essentia Health. They asked if they could use our parking lot to um do a drive up flu shot clinic. Basically, um what would happen is we'd use our two entrances, one as an entrance, one as an exit. Person would drive up. They'll have approximately five people there that would have to enter our building. Um one sitting in on a computer doing registration, um people giving shots, and then one person with the who get people to register for their shot. Um and then no one would get out of the car. They'd drive up with their paperwork, get the shot, and then leave. Um I did check with him to see if he had a problem with that, using that front parking lot. And he actually um said that if you needed help directing traffic and stuff like that, they would assist. So we don't have a problem with them using the building. They um asked us if we could even possibly assist in giving some shots. Um I'm completely fine with that. Um PPE would be worn and all the precautions taken. So we just need council approval to use the facility.
Is there been a date set yet?
What's that?
Is there no, no, no date yet?
Uh no. They needed a location before they could do dates. So we're the first step. It looks like it's going to be like in October.
I talked to Chief Suler today and his idea was maybe um using Dorchester coming in off of six 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 and then using that entry, that first entry, and then going out towards Kennedy Memorial. And that way there would be plenty of room for cars that would be lined up um going between the EMS building and and County Road six six six. So I think it it'll work. I think it's a good idea. I think a lot of people could utilize it. Um right now, they're just looking for a place. Once they get a something firm, then they would go ahead and set a date and get information out. So I'd like to make a motion that we would authorize the use of the EMS building to Essentia for giving out flu shots.
Alright, motion by Councillor Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor of Relent?
Yes. Alright, moving on, approval of twenty twenty one Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, twenty twenty one dues in the amount of four thousand two hundred and six dollars involuntary assessment of twenty twenty one in the amount of four ninety four. That assessments for water and wastewater, they're basically our, one of our main lobbyists down in the cities um as far as trying to get stuff through the state. So anybody have any questions on this? This is something we do every year.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Segler, support? All support. Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor of Relent?
Yes. Item C, adopt City of White Lakes Resolution twenty twenty oh two zero, resolution opting to increase the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in the statewide volunteer firefighter plan. Councillor Zins?
Uh this was ba- brought up at the last business meeting. Uh Tony, I'll let you explain this to the council.
Alright, so right now, per year of service, everyone gets fifteen hundred for their pension. Um starting January first, we have been with Para for five years, so we can increase our benefit. Um since we switched to Para five years ago, the city has not had to contribute any money to Para to the pension fund. Um we had a cost analysis done through Para. Um and that came back and showed that with no city contribution, that we could go up to, I think it was twenty two hundred with no city contribution. We are asking to raise it to two thousand for and just so everyone's clear too, is that's just for so people who retire after January first, everyone who's retired before will stay at the fifteen hundred who hasn't collected. Um and then everyone else would switch to two thousand starting after January first.
Questions? Not a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Zins to approve, uh support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Peterson. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor of Relent?
Mayor of Relent's going to abstain because my wife is in involved with that, so I'm abstaining from that vote. Okay, motion carries. Um item D, adopt a City of White Lakes Resolution twenty twenty dash zero two one, a resolution urging lawmakers to pass a bonding bill in this special session, September twenty twenty. Um.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councillor Segler?
Support.
Support by Councillor Zins, any discussion?
Uh yeah, I guess just a comment, and I had made this comment to Becky. I think I I know how important it is that a bonding bill is, needs to pass. And I think our legislators know that, and if they didn't, they shouldn't be in elected to the position they're in. I think this is a total waste of paper and our time. If that's the only way we can get a message that the importance of this bonding bill, they need to pull their head out of their you-know-what and do the business they were sent to do down there rather than screw around with their po- power struggles they've been having in their special session. So that's my feeling on it.
Thank you, Councillor Pop, for that. Any, any other discussion?
Support that.
Alright, I do have support, didn't, yeah, uh roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor of Relent?
Yes, motion carries. And then now moving to item E, approve Gritter Construction application for payment number one in the amount of two hundred and seventy one thousand two fifty for the wastewater facility improvement. Uh I got to make a comment before we move on this. Uh I just got an email from Brian. Um and we've got some great news. Um remember, we were hoping for nine point five million in grants. Uh we were just awarded. I'll let, I'll let Brian comment. What was the actual numbers?
Uh the, so the Clean Water Revolving Fund Intended Use Plan came out today for public comment, and so that's where these numbers come from. Um and so we have not heard strictly from PFA, but um I'd be shocked that they publish these numbers if they're not correct. So it comes out to a grant of ten point three seven million. Uh the total project cost um was was about twelve point one, which includes some contingencies. So the loan is wa- uh one million eight hundred and twenty four thousand.
So that's a great, great news, counsel.
And and um for for comparison, when we had kind of started looking at this whiff funding possibility, maybe even two years ago now, it's been a while. I think we had projected uh probably closer to two point five million in debt remaining for the city at, and so uh we're almost seven hundred thousand below what we had projected. And so this is um, it's just great news. You guys should celebrate. Um you know, your commitment to the projects and commitment to improving the facility and being proactive had a big part in this. Um and so just uh be proud of your guys' actions and and it's reason to celebrate, so.
Good. I just wanted to share some good news with this council tonight. So Brian and uh we're, we're looking at this uh payment number one to Gritter for two seventy one, two fifty. Any, any questions or highlights?
Um not a whole lot of highlights. Most of this was mobilization to the site. If you've been out there, it's cleared. They have trailers set up. It's, it's a beautiful construction site. I know why, there's been lots of contractors that wanted this job. Um they have started excavating and they did, did just start pouring concrete. Um and so I did also include an update memo for you guys, and I plan to do that on a monthly basis with a couple pictures um and just updates from the site. Um and that'll come with uh every pay request. And um and then just as a reminder too, uh we, instead of retainage on this project, we're using the securities. And so when you see these pay applications, you're not going to see the five percent retainage that you may used to be seeing because that is being put aside in a separate account. And we had the original, um I think they put over two hundred thousand in originally when they set up the securities. Um so that's why you're not going to see um retainage, just as a reminder.
And then is, is that meeting still on for, was it one thirty tomorrow?
One thirty tomorrow is a progress meeting. Yep. So the monthly progress meetings will be the last Tuesday of the month at one thirty. And uh so our fr- our first monthly meeting will be tomorrow.
Okay.
And then uh uh one more thing, as I'm talking about this, you should be seeing um hopefully soon, information from PM, PFA to finalize the loan. Because the loan is still not closed. Um and when we talked to PFA probably a half ago, they expected that you could do your first draw request towards the end of September. Um and I've reached out to them. I'm hoping that we could have the loan documents at your first September meeting. Um and that way that can close and we can start drawing, so.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve this request?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Segler. Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor of Relent?
Yes, motion carries. Item F, approve Craig Beerkey purchase of lot, County Road six 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 tracks K and J. Um those are those uh twelve lots we have out there. That's like four or five now we've sold, so. And it's at the fifteen hundred per lot, so a motion to approve this?
I'll make it.
Motion by Councillor Segler, support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Peterson. Any other discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes. Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor of Relent.
Yes. Item G, adopt a City of White Lakes Resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty zero-two-two, a resolution. Authorizing mayor and city clerk treasurer to make application in the Iron Range Resources Trail Grant Program for Ranger ATV Moose Trail Section. Um, the City of White Lakes is the, is, we, the grants that the Snowmobile Club have to come through a city. So last year, Representative Lizzagard raised, got us a million dollars to work on the trail from the OHV Park to Bowabik. And we didn't have enough money, so, um, we are, SEH we're working with. They're gonna put in for a grant for five hundred thousand to finish it. That's the last leg. Um, when this is complete, that you'll be able to drive, uh, four-wheelers and side-by-sides all the way from Chisholm over to White Lake. So it's kind of a big deal to get this one, to get this finalized. So we're hoping to call for bids yet this year on it, so. Any questions on this, on this project? A motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by counselor Zin, support?
I'll support that.
Support by counselor Pop. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor of Relent.
Yes. And then going down to item I, Tom Hockford, there's a, uh, approve the letter of consent for transfer of contract. And approve execution by Mayor of Relent. Um, Al did sell the company and we just, we have to, uh, we have to approve the. The sale of, of this, since we have contracts with it and, and Attorney Brunfeld didn't have any issue with this.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion by counselor Segler? Support?
I'll support it.
Support by counselor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor of Relent.
Yes, and I just have one more item I just remembered, um. I've been working with SEH and the Ranger Snowmobile Club to get four-wheeler access from White Lakes all the way to Highway two. And we just did make the final cut for the LCCMR grant of nine hundred thousand dollars. To get that ATV to go all the way to Highway two, uh, some of the work on that, replacing the bridge on the Seven Beavers Bridge. The Round Lake Bridge, a bunch of culvert work. And, uh, they're realigning parts of the trail to, uh, miss a bunch of wetlands. So that's some other really good news, um, that, that we're getting that going, so I'll just keep the council. Uh, u- updated on that. The legislature's gotta approve it next year, but they always have approved whatever the LCCMR. Board has, has, uh, moved forward, so that's all I have. Anybody else have anything else?
Adjourned.
Adjourned by counselor Segler, support?
I'll support.
Support by counselor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor of Relent.
Yes, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.